Do you mind signing in right here for the board? And stay in that trailer?
Oh, pretty much.
Drive?
Drive if you like it. Yeah.
He was Blackwell's guardian.
Okay.
Was that ever seen him before?
Yeah. He uh, he's the one that came in from Blackwell from that side. That's to here that starts that water we go around at Red Cole's house.
Oh, yeah.
We're by Red Cole's house?
Oh, yeah.
We probably. Yeah. They, they have to.
You're saying, you're saying what's that?
Is it? You know, that's kind of how I guess.
Bro, can I stick around?
I'm liking.
Alright.
No, sir.
Tim?
Call for me.
Give you chairs?
I know why.
Oh, okay.
I've been there since I've been there.
May have told you a pretty good way. That's more the recent time where the.
And she got trouble too. She skipped school.
Y'all sign in right here, please. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm gonna say this to Patricia, she's coming. We told Patricia.
Well, I barely, I mean, it's so thick there.
I don't know when you had that.
Come on up there. Come on up there.
Yeah.
To this exhibit. I don't know what it is, it's kinda like the Holocaust. And it's all about.
Yeah, I know. Coming towards me?
Yep.
I'm sticking notes on my desk, but I'm pretty sure that's the thing.
How you doing?
I'm getting a dick for it. No, I don't even. I got dick for it. I got my hearing aid. Here from anywhere. Right, right. I got this one right here. You got that one? Squid around.
Cause I keep hoping that you did, cause I know she'll have. And I wanna know where it's at.
Now she's in Arkansas.
I am. Yeah, I saw that.
Trudy, do we need more chairs down there? Do we need more chairs down there? Okay.
Time you go pick up your mail, he's around ten, isn't it?
Yeah.
She, Michelle should have a key. Michelle should have a key. Daddy always kept a key. Oh, no, to the gang, gang going across the street, I thought that's what she wanted.
For you, it took her a long time.
Well, maybe was. Yes.
Somewhere. Probably walking down the road or something.
Yeah.
Almost every morning.
I have a nephew and a brother-in-law that works there actually. He runs all the tennis courts and all the big ones that are back. And you brought it? You've been with us a while. That's where I got my hat. How'd you get yours? Did you go down there and buy new? How'd they do this? How funny, so many. Also they can run underground in the roads and stuff. I said you wanna kiss up to them when they give you a hat, huh? Many, yeah. Not many, but this year. Sure will go there.
There's one, two, three, four chairs in the front.
Yeah, four chairs up front.
There's four chairs in the front.
I don't like the.
Yeah. I think it's all air. Did you remember? Mike, you're the one that there's one.
Yeah. Too bad that you wouldn't. I can't remember his name when he got the door. That's why I can't remember his name, the guy with the door. Yeah, you do. I don't feel too bad now. Sure. I think I have two, one time or another, it's had been quite a while ago. I worked on some of his cars.
That's probably the second. Oh, okay.
Call this meeting to order. Roll call and record members present.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Sager.
Here.
Ms. Haven.
Here.
Hey, would everyone please join us for a flag salute?
Would you listen to the flag of the United States of America? And to the flag which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll give you these to look over the previous minutes. Go ahead and take a look. We'll approve them whenever you're ready. First off, I would like to ask for Mr. Jerry Eubanks to please come up here and talk to us.
You're gonna throw me straight to the wheel, try out the bat, aren't you?
Yeah, I wanna. We got a lot to do tonight.
I'm about to walk into this one here, probably. Cause my name's Jerry, he's a time, the Blackwell Utilities Trust Board Manager. That's just another name for the guy to complain when things go wrong. My high ground is any utilities. I have a state water, wastewater license, uh, no electric. I'll answer any questions. I brought Dave, the ones I can't. What I brought up with some of your members here is that the city of Blackwell and Raymond signed a contract in nineteen ninety. I have it here. That is way past time to redo it. Way past time. We have several, several options on things that we can do. Some of the things that I have, I've told the mayor and the vice mayor, I had the pleasure of having a meeting with the three new members. But we would like to own the power line up to the diversion dam. City of Blackwell, because that's where we get our water from. We'd be willing to take that, pay you what it's worth, and upgrade it. Again, there's several ways we could go. A multi-jurisdictional grant between two entities always seems to get a higher priority than just little old Raymond or little old Blackwell trying to get two million dollars to do a power line. Our biggest problem is not that Blackwell can't, can't provide you electric. And then you can't take it. It's what we have in the middle. What's across farmland. They, you have to take a boat every time we get a big rain, if it washes out a pole to fix. It's those kinds of things. That's what we need to concentrate on together in working with to get y'all sustainable, long-range power. I know you had a proposal for K Electric. K Electric, K Electric, they're a good company, so are we. But I will give you one example for y'all to take home and think about. Under K Electric's proposal, if you have one customer in town, I don't have to say the name, you're gonna know exactly who it is when I tell you, they use a hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred kilowatts this month. If you take that one customer and you go under the contract that you have with us, opposed to K Electric. Y'all, I didn't come very organized. The town of Raymond would receive a check for seventeen hundred thirty-six dollars if they were providing you electric today. A month. Twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-two if they sustain that rate for a year. Twenty thousand a year off that customer. What the town of Raymond would get to go to your coffers, to pay for your employees, to keep the town of Raymond going. At the current rate you got right now, you get six hundred, six thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. Or eighty-three thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars a year to run your town. I'm not a fool, my mom raised me, she tells me I'd rather go with the other. Play math on that one. Again, Dave, I believe I'm right in saying that our problem lies between us.
Absolutely, yes.
It's bad. It is bad. But technically, you own that line from Thirteenth and Duwan, correct?
Yes.
In Blackwell, at Thirteenth and Duwan, that's where y'all start. You can't give me a little bitty wire and tell me to get you a million kilowatts through it just cause we got big ends. It ain't gonna work. We got all the power you need over there. We do not have a problem supplying you with and getting you what you need. We do have to fix them. And when I say that, I take the weed. Because if we can go into a multi-jurisdictional grant with us, they're gonna look at that as all of your population, all of this, the casino and everything y'all provide, and it's gonna cover a huge area, and they're gonna give us a higher rating and a top priority to do it. So Blackwell don't need to jump ahead of you, we need to bring you in with it to do it. One of the things I'll encourage the board to do, y'all really, really, really need to have a municipal utility authority. I don't know what you'll call it, Blackwell Trust Authority, I mean, Raymond Trust Authority, or Municipal Trust Authority, BMTA, I mean, it could be any of that, that's up to your attorney. If you don't have any idea who could do those documentation things for you, someone's worked for you in the past and worked for us is Bryce Kennedy. I was on the phone with him when I pulled up, he said he'd love to do it for you, and he'll do it at a special rate because he knows.
We actually already have the, I've already drawn that up.
You have, gotta draw it up to, to do that. That gives you a lot of options for grants and spending, yes ma'am?
Okay, you mentioned grants a lot, grants aren't guaranteed, what if we can't get a grant?
You know, I don't know about you, but we don't have a million, two million dollars to put a line up. I don't think Raymond does either. I think we have to go aggressively after a grant. One thing I'll tell you, you don't know me from Adam. But trust me, if we do that, it would be a top priority thing to do. Cause it benefits us as well over there.
I understand. I just also know in grant writing, it's, it's, it's not a guarantee. So if we make this commitment, then what are we, what are we looking at as a backup? What, you know, if we don't get it this year, then what do we do until we try again?
What are you looking at right now?
That's what I, well, but I mean, if I'm, what I'm looking at is you're offering a partnership, so what's the alternative if we can't get this grant?
You know, we just have to build it a little bit at a time as we can afford it, and depending upon what we do with, with that ownership between the diversion dam and there, there is a lot of factors in it. I have a council that I can't speak for.
Sure.
I have to sell them on it too. What I would like to see is us to get ownership to that, to the diversion dam, and then I can assure you, we're gonna be fixing to there on our own dime. But after that, what I'd really like to do is get that power line off of, over there and move it to Forty-Four Street, but I've got a lot of farmers.
That don't like.
That don't like that idea one bit, I promise you.
But you are, but you are saying if you had ownership, then it would be fixed to that, so we would get that out, that guarantee out of it.
Yeah, I have to be able to run that dam, cause if not, Blackwell can't get water. You know, uh, am I telling you I'm gonna go lay a whole new line through there? No, but we're gonna, we're, we're gonna start putting money into it and upgrading it where we, now, yes, sir. I believe you got a question first.
You don't, you said you don't know us from Adam, he was over at my yard the other day fixing a leak, so.
I know one person, they took, George. And, uh, I mean, I know Rick, me and him's had several.
That's my wife.
Several, I've been to your house, George. You should have warned me ahead of time.
She's worked with school system, so she knows all about grammin'.
Yeah. Let, let me use your mind a little bit. I came from Fairview, I was the city manager of Fairview for five years. And I came to Blackwell to take this job. While over there, I worked with Cardinal Engineering. Cardinal Engineering has now been bought out by Park Hill Engineering, which is a nationwide huge company. But along with Cardinal, they had a, a young lady named Maria Woodward. She was the head of NODA for twenty years. NODA does all the grant writing for Northwest Oklahoma. She ran. She came with me. That's what Blackwell just got. Four hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. Only community in the state of Oklahoma got four hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. Guess who wrote my grant? Be the latest hit, used to be head of NODA. Those are not guaranteed, but they're sure a lot better chance with that. Yes, sir?
You just mentioned that, I'm sorry, my name's Steve. You just mentioned that you would like to own the line from the diversion dam to Blackwell, basically.
Yes, sir.
And upgrade that. What would be the maximum capacity of the line from diversion dam to Brayman? After you do your upgrade, how much upgrade is gonna have to be done from there to here?
Well, we'd have to replace that line.
I, I can speak to that. The problem is not how much current that wire can carry. The problem is the voltage drop over ten miles of a wire about the size of a pencil width. If we can get that first half, which is basically what it is, from Thirteenth and Doolin in Blackwell to diversion dam, that'll take care of close to half of the voltage. Let me cut you off. This is David King. Y'all know him?
Yeah.
He was our electrical superintendent for how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty. So he is now, he was retired, and Dave is now my, I pay David to work for Blackwell, how's that? He's my advisor when it comes to electrical, so God knows, knows his stuff.
I guess the, the end result of my questioning is what would be the expenditure for Brayman to maintain that line from the diversion dam, or to, excuse me, to upgrade that line to handle what you're going, going to upgrade from Blackwell to the diversion?
If we, if we, listen, I, I think I know how to answer your question. If we upgrade the diversion dam and we got the newest, flashiest thing, you can still only take so much from there to there. So would we put it upgraded enough that we would cost you out of nowhere in the world you could do it? No. This partnership is gonna be a partnership from the day we start that to what we're looking at at the end result. Again, the perfect world would be to come down Forty-Fourth Street. But I, I've been informed, there ain't no chance in the world that's gonna ever happen. That, that's what I've been told. Okay, that ain't gonna happen. What's the secondary plan? Right where we're at, right?
Basically, the only other option.
The only other option. But what you have going across there is a power factor loss. You're losing, you may be starting out with twelve thousand volts and only getting ten thousand here in Brayman because of that size of wire and drop. But yet, see an awful lot of electric and full equipment being
waiting to get hooked up. Is the, is what you're talking about doing, is that going to handle that massive, you're gonna need massive amounts of energy to power that?
You know, we're gonna black you out if we hook them in.
Exactly.
All right. Yes, sir? I haven't really run the numbers on, on. Yes. What I've run the numbers on was what we expected originally. They keep adding. Yes. The, the voltage drop was gonna be about, I mean, it's equivalent of twelve volts on the, at the house. Was what the voltage drop was gonna be between Blackwell and Brayman. If we can upgrade from diversion to Blackwell, takes care of about six volts of that. If we go to the four-oh wire, which is what was in the plan, from Brayman to Blackwell, I am running the numbers, but I don't think there's gonna be any issue with, with not having the current. Because we're talking, we are going to aluminum instead of copper, but we're, we're talking about a wire bigger than my thumb instead of the size of a pencil width. Let me ask you, if we keep going, yes?
But, but as he said, they're, they keep adding and adding over here, and are we planning into the future enough to accommodate the increase and increase in?
We will have to. Let me, let me say one other thing. I, I, I shut JR down. I told him, I said, "You can't add anymore because of the, of the line loss." They, they wanted, they wanted to increase transformer size already, and I said, "You can't." We don't allow them, because you, it won't, it won't, it will not allow you to power your house. It will, but you'll have problems. That's why we're at that point that can't go a whole lot more the way we are. Something's gotta give if we're, if you're gonna continue to grow, or you're just done. We're stuck here. But one of the problems for both of us is that your meter is just right out here. Yes. And I'm sending you electricity from Blackwell. Y'all ain't even that line loss wheel. We need to fix it for all of us.
But is the, is the fixed to the diversion dam instead of a ban meter fixed?
I can't give you an understanding. I'm gonna stand up here and answer you. What I can tell you is I don't have an idea yet, because I don't know what this board wants to do. You know, uh, we just have to get a direction headed. I mean, I'm sure we will have this meeting more than one more, more than once. I do not have a present with a bow on it to tell you, "Here you go, young lady," you know?
Thank you.
I don't. What I have is, are you willing to hear and to work and do this together and enter into a partnership where I can start putting numbers together? I mean, me and Dave did some numbers about what your lines were over there. It's not a lot. It really ain't. It's about fifty-four thousand dollars, y'all, on the diversion dam. Everything is, is way past its time. It's, it's forty years old. It's been depreciated out. And I made him add an extra ten percent because the first number didn't look good at all. I was about to stand in front of you and say, "Hey, can I have your line for free?" It ain't worth nothing.
Well, thank you very much for your answer, sir.
I'm just trying to be a hundred percent honest with you. I don't want to be said. You lied to me. I won't lie to you. I won't answer you. It's 'cause I don't know. I won't lie to you, though.
We'll catch you next time.
Okay, you said that.
I'll give you a better answer next time.
You said that we can't go up to Forty-Fourth. Do you have another plan?
No, ma'am. I really don't.
Can you go on the other side of Forty-Fourth?
No, no. I, I think we're really, and I'm gonna refer to Dave, I really think we only have two options. In the back of my mind, I think, "Hey, man, let me talk to highway department. Let's just come right outside of the interstate." You know, that ain't an option. I'm just, but it hit my mind. I think our only two real options is currently where we're at and Forty-Fourth. Is that not correct? Yes. K Electric is on the other side of a big portion of that at Forty-Fourth. And they absolutely would not talk to us or to Brayman about joint use on those poles. They, they just wouldn't allow it. So we have those two choices. One of the things, that if we do stay where we're currently at, I'm also a certified, certified floodplain manager. We can use flooding as a deal then. We can get extra money because of that, because we're going for a flood zone, and we're increasing and bringing it up. That brings in a whole different section of grants, George, that we can get and get tapped on because of the dangers of being in a flood zone. Again, tonight is just a, I'm Jerry Eubanks, and where do y'all stand? That's basically what, what tonight is. I'll bring my mayor probably next time, and we'll report to them, but.
So would you, so would you be getting a proposal together so that we have something to, I mean, nobody wants to just jump in and say, "Yeah", without some kind of a?
We have to get a trust together into any sort of multi-year contract. We have to form a town trust, something we've been talking about for a while.
And then they could present a proposal?
You have, you have a trust. It's just not.
Are you talking?
Well, no, it, it's, it's a draft, I guess I should say. You guys just need to look at it as a board and pass it. You haven't passed it yet.
Right, they don't have to, it ain't in effect yet for, they could do that.
So we're already kind of ahead a little bit on that part.
We sent, we sent some documents up. I don't know if you got them, uh, on how to do that. But no, I get it. You don't wanna say, "Yeah, we'll do this" and not have any idea what the plan is. Here's the thing. At any point in time, anything we propose, you don't like, or this board don't like, we don't have to move forward with it. But at this point, I guess let me be blunt, you only have two options, us or K Electric. I can't, I can't constantly walk around Blackwell and keep honoring this contract that they signed in nineteen ninety, because it lets me charge you fifteen dollars for an electrician that comes up here. I ain't got a guy that makes fifteen dollars an hour. I bring a truck up here, and it's fifteen dollars an hour.
I know some guys you can hire.
Yeah, well, no, no, I won't hire him for that, you know? And the way the rate structure is, we had to dig in some books from the seventies, like the formula they used. That was a, that was a little bit unique. Once, once we figured it out, it worked. It worked, but I promise you. It was some work to figure out what formula they were using. The girls, when I asked them, "I don't know, I just do that worksheet." They give them a worksheet and it's A, B, C, D, and I mean, it works. If they ever lose that worksheet, boy, they're in trouble. But y'all know as well as I do, prices from nineteen ninety is way, 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 way gone. Blackwell has been carrying this part for a long, long time. Yes, sir?
I don't understand a lot of stuff, but you say you wanna upgrade it from Thirteenth to diversion dam. Well, how about, how the Brayman in town gets upgraded? Electric in his town is, you know, I got, I look at my wire to go down the alley, and a lot of them don't even have no insulation.
You know, that's gonna have to be with this council on whether or not you hire an electrician, or you, you have us come up and do it. I can tell you now, they probably don't call us unless it's an emergency. You know, I mean, I wouldn't call another town unless it's an emergency. One of the things we originally talked about when y'all did have an employee here was I have a bucket truck that I've held on to that we were going to donate towards the purchase of the line that is not out of its prime, by no means. It's a nice truck. And a service truck for your water department towards the purchase of that line. There's all kinds of things we can do to help each other. I do not have a rock-solid plan, y'all. I don't. But I ain't been able to move any further than this point right here about finding out whether or not y'all will be receptive to it. But I do know one thing. This contract, I have to update, whether it's month by month or not. I have to present to the board that's different than that. But I didn't wanna do that till I came up here and talked to you. Yes?
Is there a timeframe for to renegotiate the contract?
You know, once I get the deal on a month-to-month, we'll go as long as it takes till we come to an agreement. I wanted to, in the perfect world, let's just say forty-four thousand, out of the question. Y'all seem to agree. It's out of the question. We gotta go from Thirteenth to Brayman. That's what we need to do. We get with Park Hill, Maria, I need X amount of dollars. I mean, I have a folder. I don't know whose phone that is, but it makes me jump, 'cause mine does the same thing. Is this one O M P A? You haven't seen this. Okay. Well, it's for y'all. I don't know why. I have a copy and you don't. This is what O M P A designed for them all the way? Is it all the way, the section we're talking about? Yes, but it's all on Forty-Fourth. Okay, so. It, it basically, Hensley's plans, if that's what it is. Yes. They start at diversion dam. Oh, and come. And go out. At Forty-Fourth, okay. One of the luxuries of being with O M P A, which we are, we're a member city, we have free engineers. Don't cost us none. You being a customer of ours also has that luxury. So I have electrical plans designed by an engineer with an engineer's stamp coming up Forty-Fourth to Brayman that's ready to go. And what was it, a million, five? Actually, they had a grant that was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that was gonna cover all but thirteen thousand dollars and going up Forty-Fourth Street. Yeah, just for Forty-Fourth, though? Yes. But the overall project is like a million five to do it. That's between, okay, so, and this was in seventeen? Price of, some, sixteen, seventeen? Sixteen or seventeen? Okay, so now we've got five years pricing increase and everything on it. But in my mind, if back then the whole project was a million five and your part was three hundred thousand, that means Blackwell's responsible for one point two million. Now. Yes. Let, let me clarify one thing. Yes. That two hundred fifty thousand dollars was. Your part? That was the whole cost of going from diversion to Brayman up Forty-Fourth. The increase in cost is because the contractor has to, they had to have dozers, they gotta. That's, that's doing it over there. But I'm, I'm theoretically just talking about back then. One point two million was what the contractor said to do at where it's at.
That's in the place that we know we can't get to.
Okay, but that, that is from diversion dam to here? No. That was the entire project. Okay, so if your part's three hundred thousand, as we said here today, your part's one point three million dollars. Okay, one point two, whatever, because you own it from there. If we take ownership to diversion dam and we do this, and we do it on a grant, your part would be three hundred thousand and ours would be nine hundred thousand. Those aren't good numbers. We're five, six years later. I'm just trying to put it in perspective for you. So if we take, figure out an agreement to get ownership to that, that dam and do that from there, then anything from there back to Thirteenth Streets on us, our part of it, and the rest would be y'all's.
Do we have any customers that are on that line between diversion and Thirteenth?
There are a couple, but I don't think either one of them is actually active right now.
Okay, so we don't.
They're just farmers that have, they might run a pivot or something else, right? Or what about Wooderson? No, it was.
He has a well on it.
A well. He's, he's really, really sporadic. Right now, he's, he's pumping water. He's not running a well. Well, he was, he was pumping water from, from his new system that's up on diversion dam road. He's, he has a new service in there that's also contributing to the voltage drop. Right.
So if that's on that part of the line, are we getting a payment for that, or are you guys getting a payment?
No, we are not.
No, your meter's right out here. Wait a minute, no, no, no. His well. Who gets the payment? City of Blackwell. City of Blackwell. Everything between Blackwell and their meter is a Blackwell customer.
And we own the line from Brayman to Blackwell.
Yeah, to Thirteenth.
And that was always been part of the deal?
Yep.
That handshake deal.
A handshake deal on that.
That's why they always come up here and help us, like they do.
Right.
Aren't we gonna, aren't we gonna have to do what you're saying?
We don't have an option.
Because we don't have much options, because we're getting ready to kick on another factory that's down on the south end, on the south end of town. That's gonna kick on more electricity when they kick on full-fledged. Where are we going? We've already been down a couple times.
Coming in south of town.
That's nearest to me.
The marijuana plant.
Well, it's already online.
It's not, it's not full.
No, they, they've been put on hold, though. No, they, they've been put on hold though, they can't take no more from y'all. Your town can't give them no more.
Well, see, they're putting all these big, uh, air conditioning units up and when all that kicks on, man, she's going to draw.
It's already on.
No, they're not doing it.
They're not running it. Not all of it.
They, they only have so much electricity that they can get, that they can use. Now, if they put those air conditioners online and they're trying to run everything they got.
We're not going to take it.
It's not going to pull on you, that transformer's not going to get many more than what it will.
I know.
They'll have to run it, they'll have to run it in for X amount of time and this for X amount of time, they won't be able to run it together. The only way they can get more electricity is to upgrade that transformer and get more power through there. And right now, Dave is not, we're not comfortable with giving them anymore for, because what it'll do to y'all.
So you say we have a contract that hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-one. Okay, back when we had all this big, huge discussion the last time, and I believe Jerry was on the board then, maybe? I know Darlene was on the board.
Well, he was in one of the discussions.
I thought we signed something then.
No.
Okay.
This is what I have right here, and I'll be glad to give you a copy. That's dated nineteen ninety.
All I was going by is our voltage is up and down now, you know, and sometimes it just goes, you know.
Well, one of the deals is, is to, is that, and, and please believe me, I'm not belittling anybody or anything. One of y'all's problems where it blacked out a lot of y'all and y'all were upset, I saw on Facebook, it was one of our little critters. They got y'all, and they are the world's worst. They'll get up there and they'll blow a fuse and it sounds like a shotgun goes off and half the town will go off and you got a fried little squirrel. Right here, that knocked them out. It is not because of what you're drawing down, drawing on, and it's not because you're using too much power. The times we've came up here, because y'all been blacked out, it's been animals. It's not, you're, you are not pulling too much, you, you are close, but you're not over the limit. Is that the way you say that?
Actually, they're not even really close.
They're not even really close yet?
They're, they're only about half of the ampacity of the wire, though, it's not.
That they have here in town?
No, on the line.
On the line?
It's, it's the voltage drop that's killing it, it's not, it's not, but it's not.
Yeah, it's just they won't maintain the voltage all the way here, yeah, yes.
It's three years ago this month. Blackwell was supposed to have showed up at the meeting and we were supposed to sign contracts. And Blackwell didn't show up. And they never said anything else about signing the contract, do you remember that?
Yeah, I mean, there was a time whenever we were in talks with K Electric and Blackwell.
That, that got put on hold.
I thought you guys loaded to sign with Blackwell.
That's what I, that's the notes I have down there, I wasn't there three years ago.
Got our town trust.
I can't, I can't speak as to why they didn't, I can go by what I was told.
And I got another question.
Sure.
Is Brayman going to be the scapegoat? Have, when we had that bad cold weather and everything, last winter, wasn't it? Okay, everybody else had electricity in seven weeks. Brayman had to waste nine weeks before we got electricity. We had electricity before.
Well, and listen, man, electric people had blackouts, I know that, because they shut my sister off for a while, then we turned her back on.
Yeah, because you're an O M P A city? And we have hospitals, we didn't have to do the rolling blackouts. There was, you, the municipalities won't, unless it is extreme, had to be about twice as bad as it was. Before the blackout, one of the O M P A cities. The fine scapegoat. I mean, I, I can't tell you.
I mean, are we going to pay for, for our services that Blackwell is supposed to furnish us? Are we going to get left behind?
None of my wife. I mean, uh, you'll have a contract, as long as you honor that contract, I mean, it's, it's just like. You have a contract with the city to pay your utility and do certain things, it's your house. City has a contract between you, so if we couldn't come to terms, would I go back and throw a switch and cut all y'all off? You know, I wouldn't do that. I might be mad and me and him might yell at each other, I ain't going to throw a switch and cut all you people off. I mean, come on. Just because me and him can't get along, don't mean me and her can't. Actually, I do get along with her really well. She's the only one that can get me when I'm six miles, I live in Puskas. Six miles from the house on a Friday night.
Hey, guys, he was here till midnight.
Called me on a water leak, instead of calling my guys. I went and got to meet Mr. Rick. That's how we got met, Friday night.
In my shorts and my swamp boots.
He got the last, my crew fixing a water leak in his yard.
Does the fact that we have outages due to the critters, does that speak to the deterioration of the, um, infrastructure here in Brayman?
No, that's because dumb squirrel decided to run home there.
Well, no, but we, we all know, everybody in this room knows, we've got bad waters everywhere in the city.
No, no, he touched the ground, he grounded himself out and it blew it, that's, that's what happened, it's not, it's not that. The infrastructure part would be if trees rubbing, keeps rubbing, keeps rubbing, then, you know, some of those things like that. And you're having it break down and it's throwing the brake because it can't carry the current. This is because the squirrel wanted to get up there and do the thing like they do, you seen that commercial where he gets up there and he collapses because he ran a car off? He's trying to do that online, but he's not making it.
Thank you.
So, um. Guys, I'm, like I said, I'm just here to see where, where this board and y'all are willing to go. We, we could try to make this plan together. If, I leave here feeling like, hey, this, this is something that we're, we're going to do, then I'm going to immediately start hunting for grants. From Thirteenth to Brayman.
So verbal agreement will get you hunting for grants?
Not, they can't, they could make it, they, they left it broad enough that I could ask them, but I'm not going to do that. I don't care what they tell me. I want to know what y'all. If I walk out here feeling good enough that, that we're going to do this. Then I'm going to start hunting, and then it's their job and my job to come to that agreement and put the agreement that y'all accept and, and my town accepts. So.
Do you want us to give you a show of hands?
If you want to do that.
I would like what your, your presentation was, I'd like to see you move forward.
I just, I, just with the personal experience with the school, we had these same two options. We had Blackwell and we had Newkirk. Blackwell would just absorb us, thinking, that's pretty similar to K Electric. They have no reason, they don't need us. Newkirk needed our kids, they needed that revenue. They, it would help us all, we made agreements that would help both of us, and it seems to be a very similar situation. They have an actual interest in us, we have some value in that case, and the other, I feel like it's just absorption.
You're a hundred percent right, I don't, I don't want to break this town. I want y'all to flourish, because let me tell you why. Remember one of my previous jobs? City man. You run a city by surviving on sales tax. So you got this. Sales tax. If you're living here and you're growing a little bit, they're going to come there. I need to help you here.
Got a question.
Yes.
Okay, what about our electricity at home? Because our electricity is going to go way up, like, I know, I've heard people in Blackwell, their electric is way up there out in the sky. Is ours going to go sky high like that?
I have not one thing to do with your rates. I have zero to do with your rates.
So what you're saying is this contract is not a contract for rates, it's a contract for hardship with the lines.
No, that contract is for what we sell electricity to this town for, on the rate. Y'all? We did a, I'm going to answer you, we've done a mock-up rate deal. It don't change very much. It goes up, because it ain't went up since nineteen ninety. I don't know what you, what your rates have done here as a resident. But we haven't raised the rates in Brayman since nineteen ninety.
Mine's definitely gone up several times.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not putting blame there, I'm just telling you, since nineteen ninety, you have, the town, this town has been charged the same rate for electricity. That it was in nineteen ninety. So. You can vote on that all day long, but I'm not, guys, we, we, we are not going through the roof on the price. Sounds like we're not fixing to raise it up a hundred percent, I mean, where, oh my lord, they're going to say we got to raise rate on you. I'm not after that, the only thing I want to do is raise it up to the current level of where it needs to be.
You're not losing money, then you can look into your townspeople's eyes.
I want to be able to charge for what it costs me to send a guy to repair something here. That's the only two things I want to change about that, and then, to answer your question, our rates in Blackwell don't have to keep going up. Because of what we're doing, losing money in other places. That's why our rates are up, we won't lose money, we got to figure out a way to do it, they just never look to think, look at Brayman. What's Brayman costing us? That's where, and that's why we've had to go up on our rates there. I won't do it that way, I'll look at what's costing me and fix that. Before I take to the, a rate increase. Our council has vowed no new rate increases, we're getting a brand-new water treatment plant, I just got a fifteen point five million dollar loan. To create a brand-new water plant in Blackwell. And no rate increase. Not one rate increase.
I got a little off the subject question, Mort. We've got five streetlights out in Brayman, been out for about a month. Where do you think you can get them fixed?
You better get me while I'm on this contract right here, so it'd be reasonable. No.
We'll put it on the list.
It's up to them.
Run across the street in front of my shop.
We do what they ask when we get called. You know, uh, Donna called me today, a crime examiner, called me today, you got a water leak here.
That's behind my shop.
All my guys are busy, tied up. I drove up here and dislocated, called it in, got it scheduled. I didn't want to be at Rick's house at midnight, he got tired of me. So.
You're running on.
Yeah. I thought we were going to spend the night. Hey, my wife went to get, my wife worked for City of Blackwell in the water department. She went to get in a brand-new truck, uh-uh. Get in a work truck and ride in the tail in the back, she done been in the mud hole, was covered, failed twice. Had bug in her hair. No, she wasn't getting in a new GMC.
I, I can confirm that the rates have not changed since this contract of nineteen ninety, I just looked at the bills.
The only reason it would have gone up is fuel costs.
Yes.
Because your fuel costs, that's much are also based on that.
That's that number that you have to put on there that changes?
Yes, guys, I promise you, when me and him kind of did the rate structure deal. We did not abuse y'all, we made very minimal, for nineteen ninety, very minimal changes. It's just enough to say that we're doing what we need to be doing. And still allow y'all to make money. Dave, what was the difference that we came up with? I mean, they, they were still, wouldn't have to do a rate increase or anything like that. And the way we did it, it was only like three thousand dollars difference on a month of July. There was only three thousand dollars difference in a month of July. On the electric bill, doing it by the new rate versus the old rate.
Yeah, you can bill all that to the Chinese.
They're going to make that for it.
Oh, I hear it.
Because when you do them in this pool of authority, you're going to need to change the way you bill and change it to a demand rate. And that demand rate, go ahead, Dave, more than makes up for. The increase.
Yes.
It's going to give you another ten to fifteen thousand dollars on your bill. I'm here to help them with all that though, in our partnership, if they need it. Use my knowledge. Pick up the phone, call me, she does, I promise you, she does.
Jerry, thank you very much for coming up here.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, everybody.
One quick question.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at the numbers today, over one half of the power that came to Brayman.
If you had a.
Over half.
Tell them what, what it would add to their bill roughly if, if they had a demand rate.
Well, we, we, we've talked about that in the past, the, the main thing about getting a demand rate in place is. If those people take off on you, or if they just shut down. For the next eleven months, you're going to play, you're going to pay sixty percent of whatever their demand was.
That's why you need a demand rate.
Absolutely.
To cover it. If a Tesla car pulls up here to plug in. Plugged in in Blackwell, tell them the scenario.
There's no way it's cost-effective, you can't, you can't afford, without fed, federal subsidies, there's no way you could have a vehicle charging station out there. Because they pull ridiculous power for a very short period of time, they completely charge in like ten minutes.
If they come and, it's, we didn't have a demand rate there, and they come and plugged into it, it would cost us seventeen thousand dollars on our bill. That month, because it would run the demand through the roof. But we have a demand rate, we can recover that from that charging station. But if you don't have it, you can't, all you do is the little bit of kilowatt hours that they took. But it's such a massive amount. Quickly, and I know some of, some of y'all, it, 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 it's hard to get your mind around all that, because it used to be just simple kilowatt hours. That dial spinning, it did one, it did two, now I know I got fifteen kilowatt hours I'm paying for it. I'm used to that too. But now you have demand, the demand is, how much did it suck out of the system at one time? Like that, everybody does that, O M P A bills that way, everybody, they bill you a demand, you need a demand rate. Again, that's something I'll help you with me and Dave. You got anything else? Y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Now, uh, is there a representative here, men, here, here tonight? Next item I would like to talk about, discuss consideration and action, item eleven, is Steve Swain and Don Wood, or would like to say something?
Hi, um, my name's Steve Swain, if anybody doesn't know me. And, um, Mr. and Mrs. Motor have asked me to read their statement, uh, Don's on the road, he tried to get here, but physically not possible. And it blends in with what we're talking about. And it says.
Can I cut you off one more? Sure, I messed up y'all on one thing. I kept talking about contract, if we did this agreement and we owned the line to diversion dam, we wouldn't have to have a contract. We'd just have a Brayman rate. There is no ten pages y'all have signed and all that, it's just you, we would agree to a rate, then come through there, it'd be metered, and that's what you'd be charged. And then anytime we came up, we could do a mutual aid contract between the two of us to do it at cost. That way. If it costs me forty-seven dollars and twelve cents to come here, that's what you're getting billed. That just requires this council's approval and signature and that council's approval and signature. I can tell you, I can deliver on that. We'll just keep it simple, a rate, mutual aid agreement, recover cost. Now you lose my funding, except if we do that. Do you think else, Hall?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, sorry about that, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, no problem, uh, this is Mr. and Mrs. Motor, state. Oh, no problem. Uh, this is Mr. and Mrs. Motor's statement. It says, hi, Don Motor, want the city of Bremen to keep the electricity source it has today. I see it is the only way the city can survive. We need the revenue it provides to be able to pay for other items the city needs. Water line repairs, sewer line repairs, equipment the city owns. Who's going to pay these bills? The city needs to grow like it has in the past. Where there was a school, bank, lumberyard, a time when there wasn't an empty home. I believe that most of the people would rather keep it the way it was. Would like to go back to those times. Water and sewer are just as important as electricity. Bringing in more businesses will only help the city to grow, and with that, the city in time should be able to lower the electricity prices. Grocery store would be nice to have again. Maybe an auto repair shop would also be nice. So let's grow this town back to life, not kill it. My main reason for coming back to Bremen is to help everyone here in this community to have a better life here. I wanna thank all of those who believe that this is, that this can be a super-nice town, one that we all love to call home. And that is signed by Don and, and Lou. And now, if, if it's okay, I'd like to read my statement.
Go ahead, please.
Um, is there any real state stating that I can't address board members?
Go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Eckert? Um, if the next time you choose to turn your dog loose on me and my wife while we're riding our tracks in the street, it will be dealt with the way the laws of the state of Oklahoma prescribe.
Yeah. Now, let's not get into accusational stuff here.
Um, sir, it, it's very simple. We were riding our tracks, the door to their house opened, someone let their dog out, and it charged us.
I wanna interrupt, please. This is not the time nor the place.
No, it's not.
Okay. Okay. I, can I move past that, then?
Uh, as long as there's no, like, nothing more than accusational statements.
Well, it's not as accusation. I actually have it on tape. The, the tricycle that I ride has a GoPro camera mounted right on.
That's not something to be discussed here, though.
Nope. Okay. Second item that I have, I would like to thank the board for not getting me personally involved in the girls' club that you have going on up here. Um, it's very obvious that the girls are attempting to run the city. And I, and several of the people here, don't believe that that's in the best interest of the city.
Steve, you and I were voted in on the same night.
I wasn't voted into anything.
While we were voted on, the same night, correct?
And, and I, I just thank you for that.
You tried to get voted in, and you did not win.
I understand that.
I would like to say that these people were all voted in up here.
And, and I'd like to
By the people?
Sure. Um,
But there was only a few people.
To run, to run, to re-vote.
No.
What, what is, what the purpose of me making, making this statement is, it's bad for the town of Bremen. It's creating bad blood. It, it is.
It goes both ways.
It, it's creating bad blood. And
Julie, no, you?
And I have a copy here, the quote, and I'd like to read it. It's the oath of office that all of the board members take. And I'm sorry, my
No, go ahead.
My nerves are a little shot right now. It says that I desolately swear to or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. If you look into the dictionary definition of fidelity, there are some synonyms that I and a lot of the people here in this group feel like are not being accomplished at this time. The synonyms that I question are faithfulness, loyalty, and trustworthiness. And that refers to the personal agendas that we have going on in the girls' club that I referred to earlier. Um, moving past that.
He has a right to speak. He's on a
He, he, he can speak all he wants. He can speak all he wants. I'm just shaking my head.
That's because you don't agree. Why, why can't he talk?
He can talk all he wants. I'm just not agreeing with him, that's all.
Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I would like to remind the board that workplace harassment is illegal. It's against the law. And in employers that have less than fifteen people, the Attorney General of the State of Oklahoma is the people that investigate that. Ms. Megan, and I apologize, I don't know your last name. Um, there are many of us in this town that simply do not trust you. And I have one last statement. I would like to close by asking that Ms. Eckert, Ms. Jinger, Mr. Lund, and Ms. Megan resign immediately. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna go on to the next one. We'll do, um, let's go ahead and do a letter from concerned citizen to be read by Donna Campbell.
Alrighty. Title of this is more of a story than anything, I think, or I feel. Um, it's called "The Hat." Thank you for allowing me, as a Bremen-area concerned citizen, to share a few thoughts that I hope will be helpful in the future. We concerned citizens, as a reminder, do care about this town and community, and as to when you make decisions on behalf of the town of Bremen, they do impact the surrounding rural areas. I tell you this to set the stage for what I'm about to say concerning the unrest that seems to be a part of what's going on in this town. I have lived in this community many years and care for what the future holds. In the past, I've worked at jobs, been involved in many community organizations, taking on responsibility of serving on committees and offices. With each of these, I wore different hats. Of course, I had my personal hat that I wore when making my personal comment and decisions. Taking that hat off and putting on the hat for a new role, be it my job, committee, or office, when I was serving in a different setting. Wearing our personal hat allows us to make decisions and comments, and comment in haste, anger, and tone of voice without regard to how others will be affected. Our personal hat, hat allows our true personalities to emerge, good or bad. The hat of service should always be that of a servant slow to anger, slow knowledgeable decisions that are Yeah. that are not for personal gain, put with respect of how it affects the situation. Each of you, upon taking a position on the town of Bork, town of Bremen Council, must make sure you are wearing the hat of the town of Bremen Council, not your personal hat, when making comments or making decisions on behalf of the town. Anytime you allow your personal feelings, interests, and personality, personal conflicts can govern your decisions, you are not doing what you are called to do, or what's good and right for the position you have taken and ought to do. Your current, future decisions will make this town grow, or will set it up to be just like a town just up the road, about six miles northeast of here. I remember when we could go to Honeywell, to church at one of the two churches, to buy groceries, buy stamps at the post office, deliver our grains to the elevator, go to the telephone operator to make long-distance calls, eat at cafe, take a car for repairs, buy gas at a gas station, sell our eggs and cream at the creamery. What's there now? A few houses. Could we, as a community, be looking at a Honeywell in the future because of wearing the wrong hats when decisions are being made? I challenge each of you to drive down the street and look what has happened in just a very short time, compared to what it has looked like, and how quickly a change, change has come about. What happened to the street and the park apparel, the unending evidence of upgrading, repair, and maintenance of city utilities, is this a result of the wrong hat? To change utility providers, what hat are you wearing when decisions are made? The hat to lower your personal utilities, or the hat that will provide funds for, operate the city with? Will this be more grants for the betterment of this town? Should there be some changes in the hat that were worn and bring back on bended knees, those that have worked so hard to maintain here in our town? Or should this continue as is because of personal vindictive reason? Any grievances that are not of the town of Bremen's nature and his personal should be handled privately. Keep all maintenance grievances based on the kind of jobs that have been done by those hired to do it, and keep in mind, they are doing all they can to keep the town of Bremen working and looking good, and are working hard dealing with the elements and people. Always try to take, always try to walk in their shoes and wear the town of Bremen hat when making comments and decisions. Each of you have a big responsibility wearing the right hat. Thank you.
That's really good advice.
Thank you, I can.
That's very good. Thank you for reading that, Donna.
Welcome.
Alright. Let me go ahead and take us back to item one now. It's gonna be the reading of the previous minutes. Does everybody on the board have a chance to get there?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the previous minute.
I second it.
Call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
Yes.
Okay, everyone have a chance to look at this consent agenda, the bills?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have any questions on those?
I make the motion to pay bills.
I'll second it.
Call for a vote.
Just go on.
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
Yes.
Okay, item three is fire department bills. Didn't, didn't they vote to agree on that last one?
You voted for them to purchase. This is the bill to pay. That's all it is.
What am I paying?
The flesh and bone.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert? Yes. Ms. Haver?
Yes.
Item four is discussion and action to approve NOTA invoice one eight one five eight dash one. This is a CDBG grant for sixteen hundred dollars, and it has to do with our new rec center we're being put down, that's being put in.
All this is, is it's just saying that we're gonna use the grant funds to pay the invoice. That's all we're agreeing.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
Yes.
Item five is bank card.
So, um, Eric had a debit card. He's already turned it in. It's already been shredded, but we just need to get it off the account.
I'll make the motion. Call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
Yes.
Air Midcare, what is, what, table that?
Yes, we'll table it.
Okay, table that. Uh, item eight is paying bills online.
So, are you? Me? Okay. She's, um, having issues, um, you would put this on me, with the mail service, with the bill, some bills get delivered. And I think it would really help if we could just go ahead and pay them trouble bills online, like a CenterPoint.
It took almost a month for CenterPoint to get theirs.
And, you know, if it's late, then you're paying the fee.
But they see the postage when we sent it.
It doesn't make any difference.
I don't agree with that. And they could be sitting there holding it for a month.
Paying it online.
So, we're just asking if, uh,
Do you have a list of suppliers that you would like to pay online?
There's Walmart, there's Lowe's, there's CenterPoint. I'm not, uh, I don't have a written list.
So, add that into whatever we need to, they charge you to pay your own bills.
Oh, okay.
Some, not like
CenterPoint does.
Other than that.
Yeah, it's like three fifty, something like that.
Okay. Um, another one that for sure need to stay checked is the water and the electric bill, because that's our, those are obvious.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Uh, some of the taxes I can do online, you know, like the sales tax, which I know there's a check this time. I can do that online.
Well, a couple of those have to be online, right? The couple of the taxes have to be online.
Yes, I, I
I understand, I understand, that's what I discussed before.
Invoices and checks as a paper trail.
Yeah. We've discussed before.
You can print the invoice off of the internet, and you can also print your receipt off of the internet.
We can do, we can do the same thing with Craigford, invoice, uh, Craigford Board, and an invoice printed off of
So if you're going to pay bills online, I mean, you can simply clear which one to pay online.
Can you get us a list for next meeting?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea to table it.
Table it till the next.
Yes.
Then Michaela can come up with a list.
Okay, item nine's vacuum for office.
We don't have a vacuum. And I need one.
Take one of ours at home. That'll work. Simple.
Okay, no action on that, though, right? Uh, item ten is sidewalk at Jolene Race. Now, we discussed this at the last meeting, and we thought that we were gonna go ahead and fix it, right?
I thought, didn't he say he was gonna?
I thought he was gonna
He wanted to take it out.
He was gonna fix it.
He wants to take it out now?
Yeah, that's what he's But he wants to fix the metal part. He was gonna weld the metal.
So it still has a way to go and not have to go through the ditch.
Right.
Yeah.
He was wanting
This makes it official.
Yeah, we just discussed this, we had to put it on that agenda.
We discussed allowing him to fix it himself?
Oh, yes.
Okay, well then, I'll make the motion
Second.
That, that property was there allowed to fix their own sidewalk crossing. Second, call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Jillian, Mrs. Well, I think they're gonna fix that one down at the corner by the grow house.
It's, uh, it's scheduled to be fixed. It is. It's scheduled to be fixed. Uh, we just have, uh, we have, obviously. Have you heard about, anything about it yet?
He's gonna fix it.
I know, I know.
No, no, we were supposed to be waiting to get some money back.
Well, we got the check.
We got the check?
Yeah.
Okay, then all we're waiting for is to, we're gonna get some concrete form, or we're gonna make some forms of, for a new, a new concrete.
Yeah, we got.
Well, if you move along, it gets to number twelve.
We're gonna get
I'm pretty sure we have all the supplies. It was ordered before arriving.
Did we approve this last one? Did we approve this?
Yeah, we, I was in the middle of the vote.
Now, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
Okay. Next one is, uh, we're gonna need to go into executive session on this next one.
Oh, you did?
In this eight oh nine, we're gonna go into executive session. Or need a motion. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
I'll second. She seconded that. Call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell? Ms. Eckert?
Yes.
Ms. Haver?
What happened to the guy?
I'm gonna fire the board. Fired? He quit.
No, 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 we fired him.
So, who's gonna make the phone call to get the lights fixed? I want the one fixed in front of my car.
Well, we have the light works well.
And the one down there where the Valerie's old house is two over there, the Valerie's Park. Where Jared and James... About that one's daughter. Right next to the park on...
Are we caring for him or we're...
Yeah. The lady.
Oh, Jared, he's not on the board.
That was just... Well, the street light right there, that's the... Other than that, I don't care. I prefer mine.
We're going to revisit that at another line.
When everything's done, that one... That killed that one.
Okay.
That's one that...
Yeah, I know, Jolene was telling me about that one on the board.
Oh! It was really good talking to her.
Too late.
Oh, listen, you've already heard. I'm trying to get the page down, please cover it up.
He does the same thing.
It was like me calling Philly when they were shooting the mail. I'm gonna ask another question.
He's looking more serious.
Otherwise... Because they, even when the noise comes down to the... It may be this strong here.
You know, they shut it down or...
They can't go down three feet without... We're gonna...
The only thing less, uh, the only thing they did was...
They have to bring him in. Hi, I'm Sarah Bill. And Haley and I plan to come work. They must be... We ain't got no kids, okay? Party while we're down.
It's not in order because my phone's jacked. This was first back... I wouldn't...
Yeah, I know.
Make sure it's, uh, it doesn't say anything about using a little bit of solid...
Firehouse is pretty tall.
Love it. You watch it. Comfortable with a blooming... It's not solid. Park, copper, parking.
And nobody's gonna like the great thing I got. It's like, yeah, they like to go up. It's easy to have six, seven, three dollars.
We have...
You got the email that said, uh, Jordan or yesterday, district meeting? District meeting this weekend. This weekend. Got to take copies down there to the, uh, ice command of West. And I'm going on to, uh, having to... I sent you email. I sent you email.
I checked my email before I get out of bed.
I don't know.
I'll check the temperature, then I'll check the... Then I'll get out.
So, this, this, this last bill... So, the rate itself has, uh, changed. I'd have to go back and look. There's a... So, what you better remember, here's some of the... So, anyway, I'm sure we need to pay on one day that first. Now, if I estimate it...
Give, give you...
It was the funds that I had divided by three. I'm not sure I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
Run away while... We're gonna go play the college.
He didn't say, "I'll take him for anything." Yeah. Lady Calvert, yeah, from her...
Well, you gotta take it out.
Yeah, we're gonna take it out. I had a bad break. That's, that's in all the...
Am I gonna pull a glove on this? It's white. You guys are sort of... It would probably be brought up on different... I'm gonna put on you, man. Are you talking about your sister wearing it? Yeah, I think they love it for the... Which one do you wanna do? No, there won't be a agreement. It'll be a name, and that'll be here. This won't exist.
The biggest order is...
They are McDonald's. Well, but, I mean, it's probably what they want. They're getting a death value. See, man, Rick's already talking about generating... We're already talking about these batteries. Generating batteries. Lithium batteries. What are you talking about? I was talking about...
I... While I told them...
Oh. Do you own that trailer by the sun pool? You interested in selling it or anything?
Your granddaughter wanted to buy it.
Oh, she already been there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
She offered me five thousand.
Oh, so did the land in New Orleans.
Just an hour. But anyway, now, so, I'm, so, I'm working on my house right now. I'm living in the little trailer and the big trailer.
Oh, yeah.
When my son comes, he stays in the big trailer and I stay in the little trailer.
Oh, okay.
They live one lifestyle, I live another. So, I stay up until four o'clock in the morning and this will come and get me.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, I was gonna sell the whole thing for forty-five thousand. Oh. And I come and told me I wasn't very pleased. Land's really going down.
Especially here. I mean, I don't know that there's a bank around that'll loan for anything like that.
See, I thought I was right. I don't have... You know? Now...
You should have brought that damn computer.
Yeah.
I want to go back to back.
Second then, call for a vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Zephyr?
Yes.
Ms. Haven?
Yes.
Okay, it's eight forty-seven, returning to open session. Item twelve, discussion, consideration, action, hiring superintendent of utilities.
Make a motion.
Call seconded.
The motion is to hire Doug Weldon to be superintendent of utilities. Motion's been made and seconded. Call for both.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Zephyr?
Yes.
Ms. Haven?
Yes.
And for everybody, Mr. Doug Weldon.
Right here. What's your phone number?
Don't give it out.
What's your phone number?
Now, we need a progress report on, uh...
I can kind of do utilities. All right, we've had, what, three or four leaks? Three? Yes. There's one behind the church, one in the alley on Sixth and Eaton. Yeah, and that one's new. They're gonna come fix that one. I estimated meters, unless they gave any, gave me the readings. I did three months' worth of estimation.
An average on three months?
Yes, and I handed it. It wasn't through computer. So that took forever.
Okay. Uh, B is report on fire department.
Well, it's been quiet, but we are getting to that time of year again, and people are starting to burn. We all know what happens with that. But, uh, we have eighteen smoke detectors. People need them installed. We're gonna start with people in the city limits first. So if you need them, or nobody needs to make down, just holler at us, and we would be more than glad to be able to install them in the house.
So we need to put that on the marquee out here?
Yeah.
It was on Facebook.
I put it on Facebook.
Did, did you make that shareable? I think I tried to share it.
I shared it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not everybody has Facebook.
That's true. Mike, can we put it on the...
On the marquee?
No, on the...
The text?
The, the...
Oh, the alert? The...
That, and the, the call thing, and then put it on the bill. Electric bill.
Oh, on the utilities bill?
Yeah, that, that thing.
Okay, sure, yeah, that would be a good thing.
You do that.
Okay.
We'd be more than glad to get out and get those installed for people to save them, so we got them.
Okay.
We wanna get them out for people to use.
Okay.
Uh, chili and stew dinners coming up the weekend after Thanksgiving.
What's the time on that?
Uh, we're gonna start serving.
Chambers having their basket auction.
Basket auction. Running out at same time. Pray, pray, start to add. Six sticks.
On what day?
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
The Sunday.
They hear my feet.
Yeah.
Whenever you show up.
PM. Cause I am, Mike, you'd be the only one there.
I give a skirt up, Earl.
Angel Tiger Hunt's coming up too, the registration's gonna be January eighth, the Tiger Hunt will be January ninth.
January eighth, January ninth.
Okay, just for people in town.
Kinda like that.
Yeah.
Oh, well, and I don't want to do it.
It's a pretty good little fundraiser, and we have a lot, a lot of fun doing it, so, um, that's all the fundraiser stuff. We've got some stuff that we need to get fixed on our trucks, we need to get some pools ordered, we got a pump down on T twenty, that structure fire over there, we couldn't keep oil in it, it just keeps pumping right out, so we need to get that replaced or fixed, and then the generator on the regular truck, it will not run, so we need to find somewhere that we can get these things...
Didn't you say that was under warranty still?
What?
Generator?
Uh-uh.
Somebody said something about a warranty or something.
They, they thought it might've, might be, but they weren't for sure.
Oh, okay.
Chris, you got your grant from the forestry department, by the way.
Okay. But we just, we need to get that stuff addressed and ASAP.
So you need a, a new pump, and you need a new generator?
We need somebody that can rebuild that one.
You need a new pump and a new generator?
Yeah, I mean, the generator, I think, is a fuel pump.
Oh, okay. Fuel pump for generator. So you, so the fuel pump for generator, that makes you think it's fixable?
Yeah, it's fixable.
Okay.
And that, that pump, I'd rather just see us get a new one, because there's no telling what's wrong with it, why there's, oil keeps coming out of it, but they're old and getting wore out, so we just need to...
Oh, so we just need a new one, then?
We just need to get a new one, and I'll get some prices and go from there. And then we need to order some, uh, we got that KLE, or that KO grant for fifteen hundred, that was for slip more risky gear.
Mm-hmm.
So I would like to permit them to go ahead and get all that stuff ordered.
Definitely.
That we need and...
Right, I mean, I think...
Start getting it before the next year is due.
You got the money for it, I'd say definitely get, get the equipment.
And then, uh, I need to get a copy of the clear check for our radios, and then what we made last year on our fish fry.
Okay.
And we need to get that emailed to Jennifer Brown at Canopla, because she has our grant money from there, but that's all she needs, so we can, she can issue it to us, so... That was forty-nine hundred bucks, so...
Thank you.
We could, we sure use that for getting our trucks back up, and then, uh, we have an insurance guy come up Thursday. He came by from the guys that we switched over our insurance to, and he went over everything with us, and what's covered, what's not, and I think it was a, I think it was a smart move, and I appreciate you guys backing us on that, and letting us go to that insurance, and I know it's a little higher in the year, but if we lose a set of gear out there, that's, that's like five grand.
And it's what, and it helps you guys with...
They replace old with new, whether it's a hundred years old, they replace it with new stuff, so...
Now, there was talk about this, but did it, did this new insurance, did it cover your guys' personal vehicles?
Yes, it covers us, and if we get called to the station, and if we have a wreck, we're covered under that.
Good.
And our personal vehicle, so...
That, that helps immensely for volunteer fire departments.
Yes, it does. And, you know, he's, he told us, the fire department that's lost everything, and just like that one that we donated that gear to, they lost everything they had, and within twenty-four hours, he had those, he had the fire department over a hundred thousand dollar check to them, and within less than twenty-four hours. So he said, there's no waiting on your money, if something happens, you call us, and we'll get it to you. So it's pretty impressive, insurance, but, I think that's all I got, it's just moving quiet, and that's what we wanna keep, but we don't need that to us.
Chris, on that same note, insurance, okay, does that department have inventory of everything out there?
Perhaps, I don't have anything on file.
The, uh, just, just vehicles?
Yes.
File?
Just vehicles, none of the equipment.
Well, the, the insurance don't require us to have that, but it's something we need to...
It's a good idea to have it. I'm here much of that.
We need to sit down with all my guys, and just go through everything we got, and the way it's, we know what we have.
Yeah.
If something does happen, so...
If something happened, like, if that other place, you'd know what to replace, at least.
Yeah, if it happened here, I don't, I don't wanna undo that, but it does happen.
Yeah.
So... All I ask is just keep on supporting us, and we keep doing what we do, and appreciate everyone's support.
Yes, sir. Steve?
Question for Chris, does the, uh, parts and pieces that you need, does that put you out of commission?
They is still running, we just gotta have some, hey, back here putting oil in it.
So, well, I guess, can you fight fires?
We check the gas, fill up the oil. Yeah, we can still fight fire the way it is.
Okay.
We're not out of commission, the, the generator part is, that's for vehicle wrecks, and so we can run our lights. We got lighting out there, so without it, and we're on interstate, and we can get down and...
James, and I guess... Hey, Chris, did you ever get Jerry's memorial, that whatever they wanted, the...
Yes, yes, ma'am, too.
And what did they, when did you get it?
We got, we got a computer and a printer scanner.
Good deal.
So we can keep track of the receipts, and we can give them to her, and we're not going back and forth, so it was very appreciated. It's very appreciated.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, C is gonna be report on emergency management.
Same thing for emergency management, it's been quiet, knock on wood, somewhere, whatever, here. Um, nothing really new to report.
Yeah, well, it's not new, it's old news.
Old news?
Cause I'll have a radio...
Right, yeah.
I tried to call him. I know. I just never got a call back.
You have to, uh, you have to stay on this guy.
Okay.
Really hard to call.
Email me his number, and I'll...
Didn't I email you, set on his up?
Then...
Did you email it to me?
I just called the store.
Yeah.
I mean, we spent a lot of money on that guy, so he should've been here ASAP.
Right.
Yeah.
And then he showed up.
First priority, I thought.
He showed up, and then nobody was here, so he left, and hasn't been, hasn't been back since?
And we didn't have to buy a base radio for Blackwell, cause the police department donated one that they had to us, so we didn't have to pay for that.
That's awesome. Okay. I'll email it to you later, Shaw.
Okay.
Uh, okay, thank you, uh, next item is public comment.
I would like to say something, why, I mean, just as, as a fire chief, why does it have to, to come to this, to have this many people at a city meeting, why does it have to come to people butting heads, and people not getting along, for everybody to show up to the city meeting? That, that's my biggest deal, this is what always happens, it happened with Marv, that deal happened with Marv, that everybody was here, so why does it have to take that to have everybody here at the city meeting? Last city meeting, there was like four people there.
I think it's because we don't have enough funds to do, like, we really need a dog catcher, somebody to take care of the dog control, I've messed with that for over twenty years, we don't have the money.
But it doesn't cost money to come to a city meeting?
Well, I can come, and I can complain, but there's no answer for it, if there's no money to hire the, the dog catcher, fix the appropriate pen, there's nothing you can do, and I understand that, I understand that. I, I, I don't know what we can do about it.
To touch base on the dog issue, uh, we are going to be in talks this next month with the chief of police of Blackwell, Cindy Young is spearheading it, and we're going to get an agreement made up.
That's two months ago.
Yeah.
Or three.
Well, I've been told that before, you know, and then what happens is, Blackwell ends up having problems in their town, so they're so busy concentrating on, on their town, which is understandable, I understand that. You would, if you lived in Blackwell and you was on that board, you'd say, well, I don't know why we wanna go up there and catch their dogs, we, we've got problems here we got to solve, and that's all understandable, but I think that's why, it's because we hit a brick wall when there's not the funds to fix what really needs to be fixed.
We have to have a contract with them, or they'll do nothing for us.
Right.
Money or no money.
Right.
So it just takes, go ahead.
A couple of weeks, two, three weeks ago, there was a situation across from our house, right south of Andy's, I called the police department, looking for the animal control, and they put me in touch with the girl that works with Cindy, and her and Cindy came up and took, and listened to what I had to say, so...
Well, that's good, that's a step in the right direction, I have to say, because it's, I used to call the sheriff's department, it was so bad, it, it was, and here's my, here's what they told me when I called the sheriff's department, is you have the right to shoot that animal if it comes on your property. Okay, I understand that, but guess what happens when you shoot somebody's pet?
Yeah.
Okay, I've just shot your pet, what's your response?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get her. So you start a war, and I didn't want that, you know, so I just tried to avoid those parts of town.
And then you run into the case of if they're thorough, it's how much money they cost, too.
Well, and to speak to Chris's point about why don't people show up and stuff, that two, two times people aren't gonna show up is if they think things are going well, or if there's no help, no hope whatsoever.
Sir, can you introduce yourself, please?
My name's Jeremy Bippert, and I've lived here about two years now, in town.
Thank you.
But when you get crowds like this, it's because people are concerned, they see, they see things aren't going in the right direction, they wanna see change, but when the, things are going well, or there's no hope whatsoever, then they've checked out, or they don't think they need it, need it within, but...
Exactly right.
When you get turnouts like this, it should speak volumes to you guys that you need to change course on something that you're doing, because you have a whole room full, a whole town full of people that aren't happy with what's going on.
They're concerned.
We're not here because we are happy with what's going on. We're not here because we are happy with what's going on.
Right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Well, and I know there just isn't enough funds to cover all the bases. I know that. It's pretty.
James, I wanna change the subject real quick.
Yes.
I know there's nothing we can do.
Yes.
I know. Don't do no good, call sheriff. I know that. Call sheriff. We have small children riding four-wheelers in town.
Yes.
Small motorcycles, whoom, whoom, up and down our alleyways, around and around.
Through private property too.
Through private property, running stop signs.
Yeah.
What if I would hit an eight-year-old and kill it? Kill her. Kill him. Kill them. And I'm going up for charges. All right, now, I know there's nothing you can do. We can call the sheriff. He don't get over here or they don't come. Isn't there a city ordinance against the four-wheelers and small motorcycles?
If we do that, then that means none of the farmers that have their side-by-sides can drive them into town. Nobody can ride their, their lawnmowers from town? You can't ride your lawnmower from side to side.
But what I'm saying is they can't do it out to federal government. You can't run a four-wheeler out there, you know what I'm saying? But my concern is somebody's gonna kill these kids.
Well, I can tell you one thing. If it's a little green, if it's a lime green fender on it and a little fat kid on it, you call me and I'll make, I'll take care of that one.
This highway, right, is a state highway. And there is not supposed to be any traffic that is not tagged on that highway. The only time they're ever supposed to be, is okay for them to be on that highway is if they're crossing. That's it.
Well, they shouldn't even be on a public street. It's against the law, period.
It is against the law.
And.
I'm guilty of torturing cops on me.
Answer to your question is we don't have any law enforcement to enforce it.
Okay, I got it. I got your question. But she actually did stand up for herself and said, hey, if it's anything to do with her, let her know.
That's right.
Which we do got somebody else that's on the board that's got motorcycles, mo, or go-karts, four-wheelers. And they ride them around, ride them around, and she's on the board. And, I mean, like him, he's not on the board, which he does work for the city, so that's one thing. But like he is saying, if he's just a person like me that's not on the board, okay, if I'm out there riding that motorcycle or a four-wheeler, cops will catch me. That's my problem. But if you're on the board representing your guy's self, right? That person should, like her, she's saying I'm gonna stay it up because I, we make these laws here, right?
Well, I mean, just to discuss, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I go out and murder somebody, it doesn't reflect upon the town.
Well, that's right. That's. Okay, but you get what I'm saying, okay? If you may, if you guys. What I'm trying to.
It doesn't reflect upon the town. The town's not liable.
I have a question. Is there any way that the houses in town that are, look awful, nobody lives in them, that they can be torn down?
We're working on it.
They're working on it. It's serious. I'm a chair. It's a process. Most of these are dilapidated that we know need to be.
We have a list.
They, you have to find the owner somewhere in this world that will either release it to the town.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll actually explain it.
There you go.
Because we have been working on this for a while, but they, actually before COVID hit. And there is a process in your ordinances to get this taken care of. Uh, we, we know what that process is, but one of the hurdles we have is getting notice to the people that own that property. And Donna works for the mails, the mail carrier, and so she knows that to give that notice, it's gotta be certified mail where they sign for it. You can't do that everywhere. So you might be able to, in Pongca City, but you might not be able to in New York. And these people don't all live here. And you have to have notice to those people because they have a right to a hearing.
Better certified letter will go in there, my dear.
They have to sign for it.
They have to sign for it.
No. Mary, just a minute. You and me, we can relate on this. With COVID, we're not allowed to let anybody touch our equipment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't explain that part. Yeah, I did explain that part. That's why, that's what I meant. We, we started right before COVID, then COVID hit, and now we've hit this roadblock.
And it's not the actual person signing for it. It's the mail carrier.
And we have to have the actual person signing for it.
And what about the house that burned halfway down? Can't do anything about that.
Well, we're trying, but the landowner has somebody that's supposed to be clearing it, which is a family member. So without a code officer, there's not much we can do.
They're once again, they don't have the money for a code officer.
And I'm, I'm trying to get the rest of my stuff out as much as I can because I used to live there. So I still had stuff in that house. The house that burned down over here, I still have stuff in that house. I was trying to salvage as much of it as I can. I just haven't been able to get over it.
Yeah, they gotta drop that.
The fire department felt, felt it was unfit for them to even go onto the property. So that's why nothing's been touched over there because we wasn't gonna go in and do a search and rescue to find somebody that was in there digging around, so.
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement in response to the comment that you made about how many people are here for this meeting and why, why weren't they here earlier? The show of people that are here are representing that there is a problem with the board. And it's, it's not necessarily something that they can affect, but it is just to show that there are enough people in this town that honestly believe that there's a problem, that they're trying to show the board. We think there's something broke and we would like for you to fix it. And it is a culmination, uh, the last board meeting, there were, all these people didn't think something was broke. Today, there is, there is a lot of people in this room that honestly believe that there is something broke. And that's why the show is to let these people up here know that these people think this way.
I, I respect that's your opinion and, and I'm the top of mind. It's been broken for a long time and my opinion is, is we're moving in the right direction and, but that's my opinion.
Sure.
And I'm entitled to it.
And, and I respect your opinion. I've just, uh, you asked a question and I'm trying to formulate a response.
I understand. I respect that.
Um, I'd also like to make a statement about the dog situation.
Yes, sir.
At, at the intersection of Second and Eaton, Sunday morning at ten thirty, my wife and I were attacked by a dog riding our tricycles. We, we have recumbent tricycles.
File a, a report with the sheriff's department, sir?
Sheriff will command.
Did you file a report with them?
No, no. Can I finish? This, this dog that attacked us was let out of the house at exactly the su, the time that my wife and I drove by. And, um, it's a shame because I love dogs. I love every dog in this town. But when they attacked me, I'm going to proceed accordingly and I'm not like Sally. If a dog attacks my wife and I, the dog's going to be disposed. And that's just, that's sad because all these dogs are good dogs.
Well, they're somebody's pet.
They're somebody's pet, but
Needs to be trained.
The, the law states that I'm entitled to protect myself.
But they need to be on a leash or in a fenced yard. Every morning we get up, there's two dogs in our yard. And I'm, I don't know who they belong to, but they're in our yard. Yeah, three mornings, six o'clock.
I, I think that's, um.
I know one of them.
I think that's.
No, it's not ours, but I know where one of them is and we've had issues before. I think the board is very well aware of that person.
Uh, goes back to what you and I have talked about before. It's an ordinance that the people, well, some of the people would like to see enforced.
Yes, sir. But you know, it's sad because some people really do enforce it. They keep their dogs in. They keep their dogs, whether it be in a fenced yard or in, it doesn't matter. And they do really try to take care of their dogs and, and their fences. But, uh, it's kinda scary because I'm thinking there's a lot of kids riding bicycles.
How many kids have been bit lately?
Unfortunately, I. I think there's one that's been bit.
We all, unfortunately, as, as we all know, it only takes one or two bad apples.
Uh, you might wanna thank the shooter. Because there's more than you can count on your hands.
There's one there on Clyde Street too.
Yeah, alright.
Yes.
Well, if nobody else has anything, we're gonna. Sorry, there's one more.
Um, this is bad. Um, basically, since we're redoing the rec room, we have a lot of high school staff and different things in that building. They have to be taken out before they can do anything. So if anybody wants to volunteer their time or come help, we'll try to set up a date where we can get all that moved out. I just thought it's gonna take more than just one fat guy. I'm probably gonna need a few. So if we can get, get some help.
Where are we gonna put it?
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's what another issue we're working on.
My thought was. Is we need to, we can park the car on the street and put it there to more, at least we can figure out a spot for everything. So I know it's a lot of.
So basically, what's.
Talk loud.
Sorry. Sorry, I need to make my inside voice. So basically, what's in there is all the trophies from the school that we were able to save before that.
Are you talking about that recycle center?
Yes.
It's gonna be a rec.
Yes, it's gonna be a rec.
Dairy center.
So we have all them trophies. I mean, we got trophies, football equipment, banners. I mean, there's probably six hundred plus trophies in there.
So what about all those panels with all the.
Yeah, yeah, those are in there.
So why, why do you want us to.
We need help moving it.
We need help. So if anybody knows somebody that wants to help or just needs some.
So where's it moving to?
We're probably gonna move them over here to the shop.
We're gonna move.
I mean.
Temporarily until we get the work done.
I mean, they're just sitting in there anyway. They're sitting in one shop right now.
We're gonna have them in a place of honor in the new center once it's done.
Yeah, everything, hopefully, everything will be displayed when we just have a work day and it'll show up. Alright.
You say you have a good place to store it?
I'm sorry.
Did you say you have a place to store it?
Yeah, we're talking about where the shop is over here.
This white door just went away.
Yeah, the white, yeah, the white, right here. We have a, a driveway.
Sorry, we're already taking over your shop.
So the other, we'll move the.
Was it sorry? Are you talking about the old city hall building?
The old city hall, yes.
We'll put some of it there and then some of it where the town car is.
Yeah, we'll move the town car out on the street.
I think it'd be safer there and drier and not so much moisture would get in.
Plus, the roof in that city hall leaks something horrendous.
That old city hall.
Make it our rec, our new thing. Have you got somebody that's bidding on it and everything? Well, we're getting the bids right now.
We're gonna open the envelope to, to find the, the winning bid.
The thirtieth?
I think it's.
It's next week?
It's next week.
Next week.
Oh, next week. Okay.
I mean, we're hoping it's gonna be this early next year. That's what we're hoping that we'll see.
Hopefully, we'll have a place to have the home night banquet.
Next homecoming, maybe.
Mm-hmm. Next reunion, it'll be here in town.
Everything hopefully will be displayed. Uh, I'm not for certain on this, but I think that panel pictures will be up to where they can be flip-flopped around like they used to be.
So they won't be moved somewhere while this is going on that they'll get wet?
No. That's why we wanna put them over here where the roof is not leaking and it's secure and they can lock it. Yes.
No, I, I'm kinda like with James. I think I'd rather see all that stuff in all the city hall.
But Trudy says that the roof leaks. Huh? Trudy said that the roof leaks.
Oh, it does?
Not, I don't think it leaks in the back by the jail, not by the.
Yeah, but you would, you wouldn't have put the banners and all that stuff.
That's the old fire station. There's something. You can't.
By the jail.
You may fall right on through.
Yeah, but well, where that jail cell and stuff is, you won't be able to get it.
No.
It'll get mold. It'll be like everything in the museum. Remember they had the water leak and stuff because of how it is over there?
Just put it in the, the shop.
Yeah, so, which, I mean, I wish we could store, you know, extra stuff in there. It's not a good idea.
Okay, um, does anybody else have anything they wanna say?
I do.
Yes.
I know a lot of you people here are here because, um, me and Eric had walked out, well. Things were going fine. We didn't have no problems with anything until we got these new board members and it's been harassment done. Yeah, I said, I bet. Just vendettas, not liking us. Eric was doing his job and I think what you had seen and what he has done proved that he, he had this town at heart. But we had several people that just, by their, they just, uh, didn't like the way that he talked to them or the rules that they supposedly were supposed to follow, but he was following rules. And, um, you know, we were a team and we gelled well together and, honey, best of luck to you because I tell you what, you don't know what kinda HE that you're going into. Uh, uh, y'all, you, but, um, he's made me real bitter. I mean, because, my gosh, you guys ran the best mayor that we would've had, Marv. And then got Eric in here, okay, he, he he might've had a few, a few.
Can be my thing.
Yeah, I thought it was a flop, but you know, who hasn't, doesn't have one? Um, you know, but it was the job that he was doing and it was doing well. And it, I mean, we like killed ourselves several times. Do you think we would get, uh, patting on the back? No, we got kicked in the nuts, like a teeth, because something was wrong. But the majority of the people appreciated us and that's why there's such a big set here. And a team times, we got cremated on Facebook about, we were only two people in this town that was running the place and blah, 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 blah. Well, you know, yeah, we were in the spotlight because we were the two main people doing the stuff. And there's just too many people that are selfish and just thinking of themselves and do not have the talent heart. And the, the bad part is they aren't even from this town. They've been here all their life, like all of us have. And it breaks my heart because I love this town. And it took me four days to pick my stuff up and I hated doing it. But by damn if I ain't appreciated and Eric and the job that we done and I don't know, you know, people commented on how nice this town looked. Like I said, we like killed ourselves to make it that way. And we had a lot of things to do, to get done, but a lot of times we got stopped by a lot of rules, regulations, fine, but then we were following a lot of them. You have a handbook in there of all these things that, uh, codes this and codes that. Why don't we even have one if we can't enforce it? Get, I don't, time, time, meeting, 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 months, months go by and the same old, same old. It's just like an old record. Get off your butts, guys, and let's get some whatever we need to get this town pretty. I don't, I, I've had people from out of town that's like, why you got so many junky places? I mean, jeez. And it's whatever we gotta do, let's do it. Let's quit, quit talking about it. Let's do it. But no, uh, me and Eric, we check our backs, but we get pulled in and get ringed because we're we hurt somebody's feelings.
That's the world we live in.
This boy here, he helps us a lot. He was good help. But anyway. That's what I see. Oh, and another thing. Where do we stand with this Miss Sandy or Sanderski, Varros, and the theft of this town?
Yes.
I mean, that was before, yeah, that was before.
It's an ongoing.
DJ Greensfield.
It's an ongoing investigation.
It's an ongoing investigation, Mike, you know.
I'd have to call the sheriff's department. It's not up to the board or.
Listen, I've called over there.
I've discussed everything I noticed discussed with the sheriff and it is out of our hands.
They have everything.
Okay, but why aren't we been calling over there to get along, what are we doing?
For the last month and a half, I've been calling over there. I started out with the district attorney's office. And I was told it was, it was on the sheriff's back. The deputy, the investigating deputy had not turned in the papers to the state yet. So I started calling sheriff's department and I got the feeling I was being censored when I called. Oh, he's not in. He's not in. Finally, today, I talked to Sheriff Kelly. I said, what's the deal? And he said, well, I got your note that you called. I said, you out several times over the last three weeks. And he said, well, he said, we can't do nothing because it's supposed to go through the district attorney. And I said, well, they're putting it on your back. And he kinda laughed about it and he said, I gotta call into Hermanson and if he does not get back with me this week, he said, I'm gonna be standing in front of him. I said, well, this has went on long enough. It's been two and a half years. We want something done. And I said, so by the end of this week, you should have talked to Hermanson. So next week when I call, you'll have an answer. And he said, I hope so. That's where it's left. Well, I have a question. Is, uh, I think everybody knows me. Uh, could, or would it be more effective if your attorney contacted these people?
I've contacted the DA, but it's not, it's not in his hand. I'm the one that handed it over to the sheriff. But the DA can't do anything until he has it from the sheriff. So kinda like what she was just saying.
Yeah, but by you kind of rattling their chain, wouldn't they act quicker than they would in.
No, they'll act quicker if you guys rattled their chain.
We need to call them. Everybody needs to call and say, what's going on?
And as your feeling did say, I was not the only one to call over there. So if you have the time to think about it, call over there and say, we want our money.
They wanna hear from the citizens, not me. The DA works with me.
Well, they moved to Waukita, right?
Yeah, yes.
I saw it at the casino. I wondered if she's spending her money.
Okay, um, does anybody else wanna say something?
I'd like to rebuttal with Trudy. Trudy, there was many times where I brought you to Gatorade. There was times when I complimented you on your flower bed where you and Eric did a wonderful job. And as I spanned the room, there's about ten residents that live in Brim and, not discounting the rural residents, but, um, there were some inside things that happened. There was just as many complaints on Eric as there were probably compliments. So, you know, there's two sides to the story. You hear one, there's another side of the story. I'm sorry you're gone. I miss your flower beds. I'm sorry Eric's gone because he did work.
Yeah.
But he was also on a short fuse.
Oh, that's.
And so, let me, okay, I don't wanna address that. Everybody knows Eric served in the military. So did Marv. Okay? Yeah. So naturally, now, it's just, um, common knowledge that he was bound to have a short fuse and so I think people use that as an advantage to bully.
Hey, this guy's got some good shoes.
I, I, no, I disagree. Excuse me, I disagree. I have two boys in the military right now. Okay?
Yeah.
So don't use the military as an excuse.
But it was different back then too.
It's not the military.
Anybody else has something to say? Five minutes.
Hopefully, the board members will volunteer to help that guy move his stuff. I don't ever see you guys out doing anything.
Excuse me, I'm on that four-wheeler going up and down seventy-seven.
Well, get off the four-wheeler and take some of the trash out.
That's what I do. How many do you see me on the highway?
Raise your hand. How many?
I have seen her on the highway.
Three. And their other two are family.
Yeah. What do you do?
Are you kidding? I, I fix all these broken water leaks in town when I need help. I do anything.
Where are you now?
Right here, listening. All you guys is bullshit.
Well, we could use help now.
Evidently, that's obvious.
Well.
Alright.
Put one in the mouth and have.
Five minutes, five minutes. Anybody else have a comment?
Megan.
Megan, right there.
Megan, please, um, as you guys may be aware, on the last agenda, I tried to resign as your attorney and it got tabled because of what happened with Eric. And, um, sounds like some of you guys would be happy that I am resigning, so I guess you can ask. But I tried to resign last month because of the problems that we've had with the employees here. I, my job as the city attorney is to make sure you guys are following the rules and regulations that's been said, um, following open meetings and, and all of that. And if you're not gonna follow it, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. So they may even doing a good job, okay, but they probably were getting some, maybe some feedback from the board or me at meetings because of these rules and regulations. They're in place for a reason. So anyways, with that said, I am resigning, um, because I have taken a different job. And, yeah, so you guys can find another attorney.
But we used to work together. This town, we went through, several years back, we went through and painted buildings. People donated the paint. We made Bob's place look like the old Sinclair Station again. LaDonna was supposed to be in charge of that. But why can't we do it again?
That was my fault.
Let's do it. You, you were a baby.
What? You were? He drops the ball.
That was my fault.
But all I'm trying to say, let's work together.
Good job.
Alright, uh, if anybody else has five minutes of speaking?
Oh, in five minutes speaking?
Yeah, now.
Okay, I'm gonna. Okay, I'm gonna speak.
Okay, then I need the motion. I'll second that, call for a vote.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell? Mrs. Effort?
Yes.
Yes.
You didn't wanna take five minutes and say anything?
No, I don't understand, I wish you'd do that.